All right. Good evening, everybody. It is seven o'clock. And it's time to get this meeting going. So Deb, would you please call roll?
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Hansi. Counsel Perser. Counsel Parish. Counsel Stolarczyk. Counsel Miller.
Right, thank you. I'd like everybody to rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which is founded by a nation and divided with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have an agenda before us. Is there, are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, there was a change since the council packet was emailed out on Friday. Under administrative agenda, the number C was called it the engineering and capital projects update. But actually, to be more specific, it's going to be the circulation and corridor plans presentation by Dan Karas and the engineering department.
Great. Thank you. Any other changes?
That, that is all.
All right. With that, is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, approve the agenda as before us?
We have a first, a second, and an echo? All right, great. Any other discussion?
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Hansi. Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Counsel Parish.
Yes.
Counsel Stolarczyk. Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Great. This evening, we have one proclamation proclaiming May twenty seventh as observance of Memorial Day. And I've asked James to read that. And then afterwards, KJ, if you'd like to come up and say a few words would be appreciated.
All right. Whereas Memorial Day each year serves as a solemn reminder of the scourge of war and its bitter aftermath of sorrow. And whereas the Congress in a joint resolution approved May eleventh nineteen fifty, provided that Memorial Day should be set aside as a day of prayer for permanent peace. And whereas today and every day, let us remember the servicemen and women we have lost and let us honor them by rededicating ourselves to strengthening our nation's promise. With love, grace, and reflection, let us honor our fallen fellow Americans, known and unknown, who sacrificed their freedom to ensure our own. Whereas the citizens of City of Fruta desire to honor and acknowledge those who serve in uniform for their sacrifice and preservation of our American way of life. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fruta City Council hereby proclaims Monday, May twenty seventh two thousand twenty four is observation of Memorial Day in the City of Fruta and urges all citizens of this community to honor those who have served and are serving today.
Thank you, James. KJ, if you'd like to come up and say a few words, it would greatly be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. The journalist Tamara Bolton reminds us that Memorial Day is a day we pay homage to all those who did not come home. This is not Veterans Day. It is not a celebration. It is a day of solemn contemplation over the cost of freedom. Thank you for your continued support. I would like to invite the community and city council to come help us place flags on Friday, May twenty fourth at nine AM at New Elmwood. We're posting them at all the veterans graves. There's roughly four hundred or so veterans that are buried. So any, anybody, any help is much appreciated. And then on May twenty seventh, Memorial Day at nine AM, we're going to do a ceremony at New Elmwood Cemetery as well. So appreciate anybody that's able to come out and join us in remembrance. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we're going to move into section five of the agenda, public participation. This section is set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on the agenda. Generally, the city council will not discuss the issues and will not take any official action under this section of the agenda. We ask that if you do choose to speak, please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anybody here that would like to participate? Going once? Going twice? All right, with that, I will close public participation and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, these are items where all the conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council for final action. These items will be approved in a singular motion of the council. Members of the council may ask that an item be removed from the consent agenda and fully discussed. All items not removed from the consented section will then be approved. Any member of council may they vote no on a specific item without asking that they be removed from the consent agenda for full discussion. And as a reminder, any item that is removed from the consent agenda will be placed at the end of the regular agenda. So with that, any discussion on anything on the consent agenda?
Second.
All right. Once again, we have, you guys have to recuse yourself from two items. All right, Deb?
Counsel, excuse me, Counsel Hansi.
Yes.
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Counsel Parish.
Yes, but I recuse myself from items A and B.
Thank you, Counsel Stolarczyk.
Yes, I recuse myself from items A and B.
Counsel Miller.
Yes.
And Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Right, thank you very much. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge Keith Baldwin. Aaron and I had the pleasure of interviewing him two weeks ago, I think, at this point, in time for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and I think he'll make a great addition. And that means I believe that board is now fully membered up on that one. So thank you to Keith for stepping up and volunteering for that. So next, we'll move into public hearings. And I think all we have tonight are a couple quasi judicial hearings. First one up is special event liquor license permit application. Take it away.
City Council, good evening. Deb Woods, Deputy City Clerk, here to present the special event liquor permit application submitted by the Colorado Riverfront Foundation for their twenty twenty four summer concert series to be held at James M. Robb Colorado River State Park. The first one is on Saturday, June fifteenth from five to ten, and then the second concert is Saturday, September seventh from five to ten PM. Council has had the opportunity to review the council packet that was emailed on Friday, May seventeenth, and your, the application in your packet contains a diagram as well as a narrative that addresses the fencing of the perimeter, hired security signage, checking IDs and control of the licensed area. Also included in the council packet is Chief of Police Dave Kraus's memorandum that states that there's nothing that would prohibit the issuance of the license being requested. I wanted to point out tonight that there was a it was pointed out by a city council member at a previous meeting that these types of applications that fulfill all the necessary requirements and meet the criteria for approval potentially could be approved administratively, which would make better use of the city council's time at council meetings. So a discussion with the council has been scheduled for the June workshop meeting for that purpose, and essentially, if the council desires to go the route of administrative approvals that will require an ordinance amending the municipal code, designating staff as the local licensing authority for certain applications. New liquor license applications would, would not be able to be approved administratively. Those still require a public hearing. So staff is in the process of gathering information about how other municipalities in the state handle these types of applications. And I've learned that there's many jurisdictions that allow for administrative approvals, with the exception, again, of the new liquor licenses. So in the meantime, council will have to continue approving these special event liquor permits. And it is staff's recommendation to the council that the application for the special event liquor permit for the One Riverfront Foundation be approved, subject to the conditions listed in the cover sheet in your council packet. And Ron Wilson, owner of Sandstone Concerts, and Paul Nelson, Chair of the Colorado Riverfront Foundation, are present with us this evening as the applicant's representatives. So prior to opening the public hearing, I will turn it over to them for any additional comments they will have.
Thank you, Deb. Don't bite. Come on up. Yeah, I think you may have done this once or twice.
I had a hard time hearing that, but you guys have any questions for us this year?
A long time ago. It's hard to remember. But I do remember.
Well, I'd just like to say Paul and I would like to thank you guys for supporting us all these years out at the state park. It's been a long time out there now. We're just we like to continue doing what we're doing out there. It's good for the riverfront. We hope it's good for the city. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Nelson, can you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm talking these days. Great. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Let's it's just a wonderful thing that we have putting on. But sadly, we get to where people don't remember who made all of this possible. And Jim Robb had access to a a trust fund for a woman who lived in, actually, what? Loma, yeah. She owned that. And it's amazing how much we got done when people decided, let's all row together instead of rowing separately. I mean, that's really, that's the secret of the Riverfront Commission. So that saying, it's nice to see you all. And if you have anything else you want to talk about? Okay. Seems like I always have something to say.
Thanks. Thank you. All right. With that, we will open up to public input. Is there anybody that would like to say anything? All right. With that, I will close the public comment. Any questions from council?
I move to approve the application for the special events liquor permits for the Colorado Riverfront Foundation, Inc. to sell and serve alcoholic beverages at the twenty twenty four Colorado Riverfront Concert Series on the dates and times requested, subject to the conditions stated by staff.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Deb?
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Counsel Parish.
Yes.
Counsel Stolarczyk. Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Counsel Williams.
Yep.
Counsel Hansi. Motion passes six zero.
Great. And then we have a second one, which is another special event liquor permit for Rotary, or I believe Mike the Headless Chicken. And Deb, you are back up.
Okay. This is a application from the Fruta Rotary Club for Mike the Headless Chicken. He held Friday, May thirty first from three PM to ten PM, and Saturday, June first, from nine thirty AM to ten PM. Council has had the opportunity to review the Rotary's application in the council packet that was emailed on Friday, May seventeen. And the application consists of the diagram here at Civic Center Park and the narrative that addresses the fencing of the perimeter, signage, IDs and risk bands, control of the licensed area, and the memorandum from Chief Kraus that there was nothing in the application that would prohibit the issuance of the license being requested. Again, a discussion with council has been scheduled for the June workshop, workshop meeting about having these types of types of applications and other liquor license applications approved administratively, as long as all the requirements of the applications have been met. The exception to this would be an application for a new liquor license, which does require a public hearing. And the council did pass an ordinance in twenty twenty one to delegate to the city clerk's office as the licensing officer for the city, the authority to administratively process and approve applications for temporary permits pending transfers of ownership on a liquor license. And so those do not require a public hearing as long as the results of the background checks come back satisfactory. So in the meantime, council will have to continue approving these special event liquor permits. And it is staff's recommendation that the city council approve this application from the Fruta Rotary Club for the Mike the Headless Chicken Festival. And that concludes my presentation. I was trying to see if Lou was here. I talked to him.
You in a row?
I know. He said he would be here, so I don't know what happened, but as I've mentioned before, the Rotary is very experienced, years and years of experience of running beer gardens for our festivals. So the council really shouldn't have any concerns there, but so I will let you open up the public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Right, thank you. With that, we'd like to open up to public comment. Quiet. All right, without any, we'll close public comment. And then any other discussion, questions concerned from council?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the application for a special event liquor permit for the Fruta Rotary Club to sell and serve alcoholic beverages at the twenty twenty four Mike the Headless Chicken Festival on the dates and times requested, subject to the conditions stated by staff.
We have a first and a second. Take it away, Deb.
Counsel Parish.
Yes.
Counsel Stolarczyk. Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Hansi. Counsel Perser. Motion passes six zero.
Great, thank you. We have no legislative hearings tonight, so we're going to transition into the administrative agenda. Mike, do you want to do an introduction?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of council, tonight on the administrative agenda, we have three updates. These are just overviews and opportunities for you all to ask questions. First, Margaret Sell, our finance director, is going, and city clerk is going to just do a quick walkthrough of the monthly financial reports. Typically, these are found in the consent agenda once a month before we place them on the city's website. But just to kind of walk through them as we have some newer members and see if you have any questions so that you're oriented to what those reports are when they're on future consent agendas. And then I'll introduce the others before they come up, but I want to thank Margaret for walking us through those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel and Mayor. As Mike said, this is just an opportunity to go over the financial reports that you see on a monthly basis, typically on a consent agenda unless there's something unusual or of question. Just kind of address those. So the first part of the the financial report for each month is kind of a summary of our major revenue sources. Includes sales and use tax revenues for the city, lodging tax revenues, and that also includes the county sales tax and public safety tax that the city receives from Ace County. Typically, there's a little bit of a summary below that. Overall performance, the sales and use tax revenues have exceeded the budget through March by about forty four thousand dollars, and you can see on that. Sarah, can you show that? On the chart that's on the cover sheet, the bottom line, there's the collective totals in excess of budget. Sales tax revenue increases are largely driving that increase with an eight percent year-to-date increase in city sales tax and a four percent increase in county sales tax. Use tax on building materials and motor vehicles are both showing decreases on the year-to-date with a six percent decrease in motor vehicle use tax and a seventeen percent decrease in the use tax on building materials. And I think those are kind of largely driven by the inflationary factors, the interest rates being higher. People are being a little bit tighter with those large ticket purchases that they make. Lodging tax revenues are up just a little bit over the year for about one percent compared to the prior year. But we did have a strong month in March, showing a twelve percent increase for the month compared to the prior year in the same month. The next item that we have is kind of a breakdown for the month of city sales tax revenues by category. Breaks it down into retail trade, wholesale trade, other services, et cetera. And you kind of see where the leaders and the losers are. Retail trade has for the past couple of years been leading on the increased side of sales tax revenues. You can see on this particular month, utilities is down from the prior year. But we've, since we've, the remote sales tax, or excuse me, the sales tax on remote retailers was implemented several years ago, we have seen some really strong growth in our retail trade. And a lot of that is driven by our online retailers. The next piece we have been kind of tracking, especially since COVID, the community center fund charges for services and tax revenues. We had it closed down during the pandemic for a while, and the revenues took a pretty good dip. And I am pleased to say that I think this is the first month where they have shown a growth, a significant growth over pre over pre-pandemic levels. So the revenues were up sixteen percent. Part of that is attributed to a rate increase that was implemented on January the first. But a lot of that is probably also due to increased visitation. The sales tax, one percent of the city's sales and use tax revenues are dedicated to the community center. They make the bond payments, and they also support operations of the community center by approximately sixty percent, or forty percent, grab that back, sixty percent. And those revenues were up two percent. Once again, that just reflects the city sales and use tax, one percent of those revenues. And I flipped by a little too quick. The, the next item that you'll have under the actual versus budget report is a quick summary. The city has, I don't know, about thirteen or fourteen funds. Each of those funds is kind of treated like a separate little business or a big business, depending on the fund. And this summary chart just shows the revenues as percent of budget and the expenses as a percent of budget year-to-date or through April in this case. And so you can see that pretty much in all cases, our revenues are exceeding our budget, except for like the Public Places Fund, which had some one-time expenses going out. But it's kind of a good, a good report. You'd look at the trends or if there's any areas of concern on the big picture with the city. With that, also attached is a general fund at the very bottom. The budget comparison report shows, it's about twenty or thirty pages of all the individual funds and the different departments in the funds and the revenues and expenses as a percent of budget by category of revenue or expense. So if you have any questions, we have further detail than that, but that's kind of a summary report of the different areas of revenues and expenses. And then there's a more detailed report on general fund revenues at the very end that shows all the individual revenues for the general fund so that you can see how we're tracking in those revenues. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to try and respond to those.
Aaron?
So I, I wanted to dive deeper, a little bit deeper into the, the billing materials. So is that where are those sources of revenue exactly coming from? It's not just random two by fours at Co-op, but do, like, if you buy a bunch of, like, if you buy a building packet for a home and it's delivered here, that you'll be paying for the fruit there.
Yeah, we, we collect use tax upfront with a building permit. So they have to pay that two percent use tax upfront. If they have it delivered here, then they can show the vendor that they have paid the use tax and not have to pay a sales tax on delivery. However, if it's from out of the area and they're they're not doing a building permit, per se, they're doing other types of building materials, they still will collect that two percent, or excuse me, three percent use tax.
So do we expect that to go up here later this year? It seems like we've been doing a lot of horizontal construction, and so it's some verticals going to start going, it seems like, on, on some newer projects. Do we anticipate that that will happen and incur in this year to bring it back up? Because we've been looks like the last two years have been pretty stagnant.
You know, I
I shouldn't say stagnant, but lower than like twenty-two was a great year.
Yes.
Some good dips. It's for twenty-three and four.
Yes, I mean, the the main driver of the use tax on building materials is new, new construction, remodels and things like that do factor into it, but they're not a significant part of it. And I don't know with the interest rates, you know, and I, the March, or excuse me, was it the April Bray Report that Bray and Company puts out is showing an uptick in building permits being issued about a I'm sorry, I think I had it in my report here somewhere. But a pretty significant uptick for the last month. So far, we haven't quite seen that, but I'm hoping that that will trickle in as the weather improves and and I know we have a number of different subdivisions and planning stages and processed. So I think it's really a matter of the market right now.
I just have two more questions. So motor vehicles, that's down. Is that just more going to be an ebb and flow?
Yes, I think
Is it, we're not having less vehicles, unless it's, I guess, motor vehicles revenue can decrease if we have, the age of vehicles gets older, right?
Or people, less people are buying.
Yes, is it, they get older.
So it's going to be if
And there's still a shortage of new cars out there in a lot of areas. It's so hard to find stuff and I do, and my understanding is from what I've read is people are still holding on to their vehicles longer.
Which of course then
And also, interest rates, I think, reflect on that as well for people trying to take out loans to finance their new cars or used cars.
And then let's see, where did I see it? On page, page seventy-six. It was the wholesale trade that's down sixteen percent is building, is building material considered in that?
Typically not. A lot of times you'll see the wholesale trade fluctuate, and it's driven a lot by the online sales. And I think, you know, there's a lot of vendors out there, like the Utsis of the world, that people class them as a manufacturer, or they class themselves as a retailer. You know, from the consumer standpoint, it's all pretty much a retail sale, but it's whether they're making the product they're selling versus turning around and reselling a product that they're purchasing elsewhere.
I mean, it looks like, even though we're, we got some areas that are pretty significantly down. Yeah, we're still showing forty thousand above for the quarter compared to last year.
Yeah, overall, for those larger revenue sources.
So just, actually, you brought this up. In terms of use tax on building materials, that's not just vertical. That's also the horizontal that goes in, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I assumed.
I, I guess I was just asking that, of course, the vertical side, just because those are big, those big chunks. Just seeing how that's correlated.
Right. And I don't know if you saw, like, in the Sunday paper, like, the bike industry and a lot of those industries that during COVID, they ramped up so much production, and now there's a we went from having during COVID and the interruption of supply chain to now having a surplus, and it's, that's kind of hurting us as well on that level. Okay? Any other questions?
Marty, I don't know why I want to know this, but the oil and gas, can you dive into that one a little bit? It looks, it's just interesting to me that twenty two, we're, it's negative seventy one thousand and then twenty three and twenty four are only fourteen and thirty seven, is that?
That's kind of typical of the oil and gas industry, there is very large fluctuations back, anybody who was here, boom bus cycles. Will remember that that was a big deal. And is one of those areas that we continue to budget conservatively. We I will, I can't really mention individual vendors and stuff, but we do tend to see those big fluctuations in that revenue. And there can be a big refund in that revenue, which would result in a minus as well. And it is very tied into the oil and gas activity within the region as well as within the nation.
The tax percentages haven't changed.
Exact percentages?
The tax percentages that we
No, no.
I think a good point on oil and gas is, and if I remember these numbers correctly, I think the the revenues in two thousand fourteen as compared to the revenues in two thousand seventeen dropped almost ninety one percent. I mean, there was a pretty big swing and that, and interestingly enough, seventeen and every year forward, we've had more sales tax revenue than the year prior when, when we've had very little to any oil and gas. And there's been some years where we've reported on those where we've had just a blip with, with some extra oil and gas sales tax revenue, but since that completely shifted and changed majorly, it shows a little more diversification in the economy because we've had record years since two thousand seventeen on just sales tax alone.
One of the other big revenue sources from oil and gas is severance tax dollars. And that's shared back from by the state based on employment in the oil and gas sector. So we, I mean, we fluctuated from one point four million to twenty five thousand. So very big differences that make it very difficult to manage if you're just relying on that, that one source of revenue.
And then the only other one that that I was curious about was the other services, it looks like it's got a pretty substantial jump. Is that, did something get added to the category or?
No, I mean, the, the categories and the way we categorize them are all still the same. Honestly, I have, I did not look into that one, but I can try and get you an answer if there was something specific going on in that.
Yeah, I was just curious to, if we were seeing some, an uptick in something or if we had added something under the heading.
There's nothing, no one thing that's jumping out at me on the other services.
What kind of things are included in that category?
If you want to give me just a minute, I should
Kind of like that we've stumped Mark, right?
Every GL code member.
I think it's the first time in my two years.
It just seemed like a substantial jump. I mean, I don't, yeah, and I mean, I, before twenty two, Mike, do you remember, was that number pretty sustained at eight thousand ish?
I'm trying to remember on that particular category, I do not know.
And again, not dire importance, it's just as we're having the conversation, I was just curious to know.
I believe this presentation is just
Yeah, this is
Oh, is that just?
You, you have some, you have some.
Still one month, that's a big jump, especially in one month, that's a huge.
A lot of, a lot of, some of these individual categories will be completely different month to month, you know, so not, not your general, not your major categories that, you know, are, the businesses staying consistent throughout the year, but like building and things like that, those have big swings depending on when the houses come online or the materials.
A little more consistent, like per month, per year though, right? Like month to month.
Month to month, you'd be bigger swings than you see year to year.
Flexibility or, you know, but from like March, every March several years, it should be kind of similar. And it's okay, it's not really a huge, it's huge, we can get back to that, I just was
There's a list of probably a huge list, let's just leave it that way. I'll try and look and see if I can get you an answer, James.
There's just something that jumps out, it's, I'm just curious.
We'll get you an answer on it.
Great, thank you. All right, any other questions before we let her off the hot seat? All right, thank you. All right, Mike, next, I want to talk about the Frost.
We need to move to approve.
Oh, I
I'll do it, I move to accept the April twenty twenty four financial report as presented.
Second.
Do we have a first and a second? Any additional questions, concerns, discussion items? That one's gone twice, right? Dad, would you please poll council?
Counselor Stolarczyk, Counselor Miller.
Affirmative.
Counselor Williams. Counselor Hansi. Counselor Perser. Counselor Parrish.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you, now.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We, tonight, we're going to have Mark Mancuso, our Parks and Recreation Director, do just a, a brief overview of a pretty large, in-depth master plan, our Parks Health Recreation Open Space and Trails Master Plan, which is a mouthful, we call it Frost for short. And it's as a result of previous updates, so we had a previous, recent meetings that how all these master plans are tied to the comprehensive plan. And this just gets, the comprehensive plan has a specific chapter related to all the Frost topics. And then this plan gets deeper into the priorities that are within that. I will say it's, it's a, it's a heavy plan, it's probably our heaviest plan that, that probably wasn't whittled down as much as other plans. So there's a lot of projects in, in this, in this, even for a ten year plan. And Mark's going to just walk us through the highlights, touch on a few of the recent projects and touch on some of the projects that are that are at the top of the list within the Frost plan that we need to keep in mind as we go into strategic planning and also budgeting for next year.
Come on up, Mark.
We did razz him on the Parks Recreation.
All right. As, as Mark, as Mark's getting started, I don't want to, I, we can't name the company, but we have new businesses that have been coming in each year, right? And there's one in particular that has added to the other services, so. Yeah, and or a few, but one, but we can't, we can't single out businesses by law, like for what their revenues are, but that's the cool thing about new businesses coming into town that provide new services and collect new sales taxes. That's why there's a jump.
Why the jump from the other services?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks for letting me present tonight. So I have ten minutes to present on this, huge. So I will do my best to do a brief, I think they're taking bets over there on me, so.
I want to add on that.
Let's just keep this. Please proceed.
Most of you guys know what the Frost Master Plan is and what it covers, Parks Health Recreation, Open Space and Trails. You know, the, the plan represents what Fruta, you know, wanted to see the most here with our core services with recreation parks. And there are a lot of defined goals and objectives in this plan. So I've got a list of lots of things, but please note like as we don't go by this only, right? Like as different things come up, we are able to add different projects and, and change those priorities as they come up. So there's a few projects that we've done that were not listed in this or the priority wasn't as high, but the community spoke after twenty twenty, after the surveys, so. Few of the sections, the introduction, who plays here? Play in Fruta today, key themes, recommendations, progressing play, the action plan and funding, right? So this is a guide to further these policies, you know, and create the best Parks and Recreation Department that Fruta can have. So here's some of the stages that we went through to get this plan built. I'm going to kind of skip over this because this is not the fun stuff. A lot of you guys were involved, there was a lot of folks that helped guide this plan and, and put it into action. There were nine hundred and twenty six folks surveyed, I think they sent out four thousand surveys and they only got back a certain amount of those, but the information that came back did help provide a lot of needs for the community. So there are several maps, diagrams in the, the plan that show our existing facilities. This, this one has a lot of future facilities listed on it, so again, they put just everything bundled together, so the lagoon changed to the launch, right? And in the plan, it was different, so there's a few things that have changed since the plan came out. The trails framework, like this trail, this map is really good because this identifies all the like turquoise blue or all the proposed trails, right? I think one of the biggest one is trying to get all of Little Salt Wash from the community center out to Little Salt Wash Park, right? And beyond, so there's a lot of proposed trails on this. One of the, the cool things is, is we're not the ones that have to build all these trails, some of these developments are building some of the trails for us, so. Wildwood Village at Country Creek, they have that soft surface one in there that we was built by the developer, Ironwill Copper Creek. Those are, you know, trail connections that they're building as part of these larger developments too. So this is not all on us. You know, so here's kind of like the high priority trails that were listed in the plan. These prices, please don't look at those and take note, that could just be the design on trails lately, so. These are some of the higher priorities, again, I think the trail list is the most extensive, there's there's two pages of, of trails identified that we want to build, so. You know, I just highlighted the primary ones here, but really looking at trying to get Little Salt Wash to the community center, I think that would be a key, you know, we want to get kids out there as quick as possible and, and take part in those programs, so. Guiding principles for our, our department, use the best practices to provide safe, accessible, enticing amenities to enhance the recreational opportunities of the community. And then special events, we provide socially interactive, inclusive events for the Fruta residents and visitors. So one of the things I really enjoy here are the events that we put on for our community that are for the community, right? So Thursday night concerts, the movies, the, the winter concert, you know, those are all for our community, they're free. When people showed up at the winter concert, like how much for the hot cocoa, how much for that, it's free. What's the catch here? What do you, what'd you put in it like? And they, they really enjoy that and it's, it's awesome to see that and to be a part of that, right? Like how many community members, you know, get to come out and just get to take part, we put those events on. And so the special events, we take a lot of pride in that and, and really have a lot of fun in our department. So the big part, parklands, facilities, infrastructure and improvements. So they listed a high priority, medium priority projects in this plan. You know, when I first started, like it was like, all right, hey, Reed Park, first on the list, we need to get that going. And so really started working through that, looked at the plan that was in here, identified some of the key themes that needed to be on part of that plan. And then really developed what was going to happen and what we were going to construct. So, you know, on this gathering space, open turf, skate park, basketball courts, parking, those were some of the key things that were identified. The next one is Little Salt Wash expansion. So looking at additional fields, pickleball, those kinds of things. So like I said earlier, we we don't always do everything as per plan, right? So with Orr Park, you know, kind of transitioning from the skate park with the new wheel park being built, we're going to look at building some additional pickleball there in that space, right? So the immediate need for pickleball, 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 like I wish they gave me the funding every time I heard pickleball. But it, you know, we're, we're adapting to that and, and making some changes on the plan. But I think it will be a huge benefit to the community again, a quick win on that. And again, like the lagoon development area, it was a field house, courts, you know, all kinds of different things. There was an off-leash dog park, we built the dog park a few years back and, you know, kind of changing that, but. So again, lots of projects listed in this, we're using it as a guide, but you know, listening to the community on what those needs are.
And I would add in that with the riverfront development, at the time we did the Frost, I mean, it still landed as a medium priority and the and the reason it landed there was because we had just come off of, you know, doing a number of studies. We just, the numbers weren't adding up to actually do that development at that point in time. It was still a very high priority from the community because we had, we had done engagement and those types of things, but it was recognized that it was going to have to take some market conditions, economic conditions before we got to a place that we're, we're at now. And so gives us that ability, you know, with, with your direction to, to shift a little bit of that priority because the timing's right and start going on that public private partnership. Nice thing is, it's not just completely out of, out of the blue when it's like a multimillion dollar project. The smaller projects like Dog Park and the Pickleball are, are ones that have been great because they were aspects within big projects that were like the top priority uses that people wanted to see. And they might have been tied to something we were going to do sooner, but if we're able to do it sooner, pretty, pretty good. So while it's deviations, I think there's good reasoning there in the storyline and, and based on still the community feedback that, that we're utilizing to make those decisions.
Hopefully his time doesn't count on mine. Three minutes, all right. Some of the recently completed projects, Fruta Bike Park, Bark Park, eighteen road trail expansion, electrical upgrades at Civic Center, Mulberry Outdoor Plaza, Prospector Park Playground Replacement, Trail Repairs on Little Big Salt Wash Trails and then the Frost Impact Fee, you know, updating that. So on this, the asterix, so we're not only building new, right? We are maintaining some of the, of what we have, like we're hearing that loud and clear, like we're not just going to build all these new things and let things crumble. So it's a combination of maintaining what we have, trying to keep that up to a certain level. It's easier to maintain, you know, something that's newer and updated than something that's crumbling and falling apart, right? It just costs more to, to maintain that, trying to find parts and, and all that, it's really tough, right? So on all the aging equipment, we're really trying to update those, try to get staff, that's where the staff time takes. You know, it, it just consumes their time trying to take care of that older system. And so we're, we're trying to, you know, be strategic about these influx, some of that new with some of the, the replacement. So here's some of the pictures of, of the spaces, I mean, the outdoor concert was amazing, you know, Mulberry just, it was, it was hopping, it just lots of energy. The bike park, you know, just seeing that, all the, the bikes out there. And then Duck Park, I think those are somebody's dogs, Mr. Mayor's.
Just their weekend. Enjoying it. Yes, really liked the fire hydrant. They're not agility dogs.
Again, we're, we're inclusive to all, right? So like in our guiding principles, like we want to provide great rec, Parks and Recreation opportunities and it's for the dogs as well, right? So give them some options out there, so. So some of the current projects, Reed Park Downtown Restrooms, nook bottoms, vault toilets, security upgrades, the water slide, staff renovation, office renovation, some storage space and irrigation upgrades at Heritage Park. So again, the asterix, right, Reed Park was rough, it was, it was in need of some love. So again, I love showing the prison toilets. I mean, it's just doesn't invite you, right? Like that just, it's not good. I mean, the, the court there at Reed and then the, the Orr Park Raptor Skate Park, right? Like just tired, needed, updated. And so with the new stuff, right, we, the wheel park looks amazing, the new mini pit. with the new stuff, right? We the Wheel Park looks amazing, the new mini pitch surface, it's that plastic surfacing. And the restroom, right? I don't, I I thought it was I twenty five on Aspen as that thing was going in. Like, there were so many cars. I've never seen that many cars going down Aspen, but it's it's just really cool to see all the the fun projects are taking place. You know, as part of 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 this plan. The Wheel Park, I mean, I guess there's some kids that live right across that have been staring through the fence every day in the skate park. Builders are like, man, the minute we finish something, they're coming as soon as we leave. So they're leaving strategic about what they're pouring and what they're leaving. So and then the water slide, right? So this one's getting closer as well. This is the final color, the design. So just kind of working through that. They poured concrete in the mechanical room today and buttoning that up and all the plumbing that's going inside, they're they're finishing that up and hopefully be pouring concrete on the pool deck here pretty soon. So future projects, you know, pickleball construction at Orr Park, Little Salt Wash Expansion, completion of Little Salt Wash Trail from FCC to LSW, Highway three forty trail construction and the launch boat ramp, river access, trail connections. So lots of fun projects coming up. In in the plan, there's lots of talk about projects and that, but there's also talk about all the different programs, right? So we have so many different groups and different organizations, right? So youth programs, athletics, aquatics. They've got some really fun ideas and a lot of really cool things that are coming up. So our seniors, we've partnered with Premier World Discovery. And so we've got trips to New York City, Cape Cod, England, Scotland and Wales, Alpine Swiss Villages in Rails, and then Grand Canyon Tour. So we have actually ten people signed up to go to Mackinac Islands here later this year. So it is really cool to see some of these.
Need a city council liaison.
I'm very familiar with Mackinac.
So I'm just really excited about what our coordinators are doing, right? So some of the new programs, daddy-daughter dance, they're looking at a mom prom, gamer programs, esports, art classes, mom and son event this fall, kind of thinking a superhero type of deal, like this one really was intriguing, a twelve volt car race, drag racing. So take all your power wheels and go drag race other kids in their power wheels. So that kind of sounded fun. For our active adults, trivia, a prom, they want to do a drive-in movie, and then the the trips in athletics, Strider Bike Races, we added pickleball lessons that have been selling out. Dodgeball, kickball, footsaw, we just added rafting through what is the company? Rimrock, yes. So we've added rafting through our programs. Aquatics, we've added movies in the pool. They've been trying to, they want to have an adult themed one where we're showing jaws or something like that. So pirate mermaid parties, kayak roll classes, sup yoga class. And then special events, pastels in the park, mud run obstacles, they're looking at the old skate park equipment to make like the wall to run up and do some of that. And then this one was very intriguing. I had to ask more questions, the adult Easter egg hunt. So hub crawl type deal or glow in the dark flashlights kind of in. So my rec coordinators are are full of ideas. So we're just letting them go with that. So again, some of the pictures, movies in the park, some of the painting events, the trivia that we've had. So yeah, hopefully, I think it was over a little bit, but there's a lot going on, right? And so I I think it's important to highlight, like, the construction that we're doing, but all the different programs that we're offering. And if we offer one class and it doesn't work, it it didn't work. We'll try something else. But, you know, most of our classes have been pretty successful, our programs, the movie nights, you know, we the the game night wasn't as successful, so we've pivoted and now we're going to the the four movie nights and they're adding movies in the pool. So we're we're listening and yeah, adding a lot of programs. So yeah, so there's there's my presentation on the Frost Plan. There's a lot more into this, so we could talk about it some other time. But yeah, if you guys have any questions, please let me know.
Do we, are there any programs for vets to use the aquatic facilities?
Not specifically. But yeah, we have lots of private therapists that come in and do different therapy sessions and yeah.
As someone in the community that's wanting to have more available for a disabled vet and wanted to ask, I'll reach out to you.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
Talking about maintaining what we have, there's been a lot of talk lately about the fields at Salt Wash. Can you just real quick go over what the plan of attack is there?
So turf is very interesting, right? When it's growing and in the growing season, you have athletics and sports and high use on it, it tends to do okay. When there's no growth, when the temperatures are down, you still have that youth or that use on it, you're gonna have those crowns get ground in the ground. So I I mean, there's a lot of overwinter use. So our winters have been coming more mild, right? Like, I love snow in the winter because it puts it on the field and it keeps people off. Like, in the wintertime, if it's thirty some degrees sunny out, like, hey, let's go play, let's go do this. It just causes a lot of damage to the turf, right? So I I mean, there's been a lot of different uses on that. We we go in the same spot. You put a field, a soccer field in the same spot every single year. You're not going to regrow that grass, right? So we have to start looking at different field shifts. We have to do better at overseeding and maintenance. So we've identified it. Sean, you know, he ordered a bunch of seed, but we can't just put seed down because if you don't have the proper growing conditions, you're not going to grow anything. So gotta wait till you have water. We were last to get water, right? So mid-April. And then with all the, you know, different irrigation systems trying to get turned on, it's it's really difficult, right? So I've been watching the fruit of message board and but I just, I mean, it's not easy, right? Like, that's where I kind of.
I knew you, I knew that you guys were working on it. I just, I promised that I would bring it up.
And one of those things that I'm looking at, right? Like our our youth need fields to play on throughout the year. Our our winters are milder. And so, you know, if we're gonna kill turf, right? Like, look at what your dogs do to your backyard in the wintertime. They'll wear paths and they'll wear your grass down. It's not going to grow back in the in the spring, right? Like, it's it's really hard to maintain that. Same thing out on athletic fields. So I'm a huge proponent of synthetic turf fields for that reason, for winter play, right? Like, just go play, like, there, here you go, you know, stay off the grass field, let us renovate that. You know, because nobody wants us to shut down a field. Like, what happens when we they want nice fields, they want us to do this, and then we have to shut it down? It it's really tough. So we're looking at it, the cultural practices, we've been using the fertilizer from the wastewater treatment plant. It's been phenomenal. It really makes it look good. So we've seen a huge impact. We tried that last year in a few parks. Benefit to the turf, and so we're going to start using that and in other areas. So, yeah.
Talk about that, the artificial turf that you were talking about. There there are areas that you guys are identifying that we could use because that, I mean, it's pretty large builds that we would need of that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at the Little Salt Wash, right, expansion, right? So it's.
For the expansion.
Yeah, i- if we expand that, like, I think it's it's wise for us to look at a synthetic turf field. Yeah, so when you have a rainy weekend, right? Like, if you go out and play on that, like, you start getting mud and rainy weekend on synthetic turf, you're 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 playing. I I mean, it's Stoker Stadium. You have four high school teams and the college playing every week. That field would be destroyed in one week. It, you can't tell. And and so just the high use, right? It's it's intended for like, just pound it and go play on it and groom it every once in a while, clean it up, and you won't see the difference. So.
So perfect world, we would still keep the natural turf, but also have the artificial as.
Just to be clear, that we're not committed to that. That's just something that idea. It's an idea. I just want to make sure that we don't go out there and go, this is what the city's doing.
Yeah. Definitely something that I propose just because of the amount of use, right? The other thing is, is a lot of our athletes are playing on natural grass fields here. And then when they go to the front range, they're playing on synthetic turf fields, right? So it it's a different game. It it's quicker. So.
I think one of the, one of the things I'd like to highlight about Mark is his past experience in managing Canyon View Park, which has much more usage than Little Salt Wash Park and also Stoker Stadium. And so a mixture of field types and uses and things like that. I think one of the challenges is Mark has to face some of the things that he can start implementing, but it takes time to actually see some of those those longer term results. So he has to face some of the criticism of, you know, fields being in in the same spot forever and not not rotating those soccer fields and and different things like that. But I have a lot of confidence in Mark taking it as as we start implementing, we're making pretty big improvements each year to the irrigation system that they struggle with each year. Then we and we have some old systems to help out, relooking at different, different formats of of how to how to manage the turf. And and Sean and his crew, you know, the same. And so there's some things that they're working on that'll take some time to kind of turn around, but I but it makes me feel a lot more comfortable moving forward versus just when we get lucky with weather or not, you know, and so because usage is only growing. I mean, that's our, you know, so.
We want it to, like, we want to increase our programming and.
So one of our goals, like, one of my goals is host these tournaments, right? We want to have the kids talking about how nice the facilities were. We want them to want to come back, right? If you don't have a great field, nobody's going to want to come travel here to play at your field, right? So I've instilled in Sean and our Parks Crew, like, we want to be the Field of the Year. We want to be the Parks and Rec Field of the Year. We want to have pristine facilities where when these teams travel over, they're like, man, did you see Little Salt Wash? Like, that was nice. Like, there's soap in the bathrooms. Like, it doesn't look like a prison. Like, those are the things that, like, we're working on. And again, it 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 takes time. I mean, there's a lot of maintenance that we've got to catch up on, a lot of things that, you know, we're we're working towards and grass doesn't grow overnight. I mean, yeah, I would love, love for it too, but yeah, we're working on it. So, yes. Fruit of Message Board, I've been paying attention and I do monitor just to make sure, right? Like
Get to keep a finger on the pulse.
Yeah, as things come up, right? Like, our guys, Sean and and the Parks Crew, they're they're on it. They're letting me know, like, hey, this was dog bags at the trails, right? Like, they they weren't changed. And we had a staff member that was out sick and we have new staff, so they didn't check that area, but they filled it this morning. And by this afternoon, they were, two of the three were already empty. So people are just taking that many dog bags. So when you see that, you know, there's no toilet paper, there's no dog bags, parks aren't doing their thing, like, we're doing it. It just, we can't do that constantly. I mean, so, but they're working on it. So.
I love the fact that you guys true try new events and kind of have the attitude of, you know, we'll try this, some will be more successful than others. And, you know, that one wasn't as great as we thought it was in our mind, and we're going to pivot and try something else. And I hear about the pool movie night all the time. Like, stuff like that. So I just want to say, we appreciate trying new events for the local community and making those a success. Any other questions, comments?
Great job.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks to you and your whole team.
And I like your haircut.
Or lack of hair. Keep turning a lot of heads, like, who's this guy right?
I didn't recognize you when you first walked in, I will think.
We do want to, we do want to cover on, we added a slide today, and I wanted to give you a quick update on the Highway three forty trail crossing. It's in our budget this year to to do the design. So let me walk you through this real quick. This isn't the best news, but we want to want to kind of go through what we've learned. So if you if you recall, One Riverfront Foundation, they, we had ninety thousand dollars left over from their contribution when we built the the Riverfront Trail from Fruit of Toloma. We were fortunate to have three major grants, two million dollar grant and two one million dollar grants that matched each other. So local match was very minimal. And 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 when it was all said and done, there was ninety thousand left over from the One Riverfront match. They let us, we went and presented to them, they told us that they'd be happy for us to keep that, they they and put it towards a trail connection, whether it be the three forty connection or the Raptor Road Connection. The Raptor Road Connection would bring what's now a a dirt trail, it'd be part of the Riverfront Development. So along that where there's the ditch essentially going from the entry point to the paved trail system and and the Colorado River. So they they were okay with us using it towards either one. We were successful. We we received bids, maybe even the end of two years ago. And then for a hundred ninety thousand to do the design. Then we were successful at applying for and receiving a C dot grant or design of this that gave us a hundred and sixty thousand. So we went into this year feeling pretty good. We had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a hundred, for a hundred ninety thousand dollar bid to do the design of of that connection. Well, because it's a C dot grant, they they wouldn't, they did not want us to utilize that bid and wanted us to go out for their process requires a request for qualifications. So to use that hundred and sixty thousand, we went through the RFQ process, and when you start getting into further, and it, this is in C dot territory and also Mesa County County territory, as we've talked about under the that three forty bridge a number of times in the past. That increased, obviously, quite a bit, the to a four hundred and eighty thousand dollar design cost to utilize that grant. Now, we also went back because we thought, what if we don't use the grant and we and we, you know, and start looking at the differences there? The problem is because it's in C dot territory, there are some aspects of that that would that would still be needed. So we weren't able to make that shift and and necessarily, and that hundred and sixty or a hundred and ninety thousand dollar bid at this point in time would likely be higher. So we did go back to with working with the with SGM, who's who submitted the RFQ for for that process. And if we took out construction management, which which we could likely do for a for a design project like this and typically have, we we actually didn't ask for that. That was just added in. So removing that, and then there's an upstream wall that that they feel would, you you want to have to have in there as part of this design. And I'd have to have someone else explain what that is, but you'd still have your connection and everything. You could get it down to about three forty. The challenge with this is when you, when you typically design ends up being, and this isn't always exact math, but typically, we're paying about ten percent of a construction project for design. And when you're getting bids for design, they're often looking at what construction would be and how they're bidding for design. This is a pretty short connection. You just saw the projects that we have. As we've discussed internally, we can't, I can't make a recommendation to you all that we proceed with this design at this point in time because by the time we get to building it, it it could be out of date. And it's not going to rise above the Riverfront Project. It's not going to rise above the Little Salt Wash Expansion, Pickleball Courts at the Community Center, you know, the other things that we focus more on. It is a, it is a needed connection. But looking at, you know, three point five to four point five million dollars, we don't, even with grant opportunities, we'd be competing for similar grants that we're going to be seeking for these other projects. And we just feel like we've we've run into in the past where we've had good designs that because of regular, you know, different kind of requirements that change and things like that. I mean, right now, South Mesa, we had to redesign because we, and 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 this one makes a little bit bit difference when you're getting like one point seven million dollars from C dot. So you redesign it to meet their standard. when you're getting like 1.7 million dollars from C dot. So you redesign it to meet their standards. It, it weighs out pretty good, you know, on that. We had to read, the county designed Maple Street Bridge years ago. So we didn't expend money on that, but we, we, you know, we did with county taxes and they paid for that. And that's being redesigned this year because standards have changed. So sometimes it's worth getting a design and getting it done when you know you're within a period of time. Not asking you to make a decision on this tonight or anything, but I, I, it's something we, we're going to have some time to talk about capital projects, to do strategic planning, to do budgeting. But currently we're, we're likely to let SGM know that we're, we're not proceeding with this design at this point in time because of all these factors. The thing is, the 90,000 from One Riverfront, they were okay with us using it for this or towards bringing the Raptor Road connection in, which will be part of the project that we've committed to do at the Riverfront, at the, you know, at the launch site. So we still can create some connection. The challenge is there's not a great connection when you're crossing 340 and crossing at a, you know, you're either going to, you're going north on the, the old ramp, which isn't anybody's ideal. You're crossing around the state park where there's no real crosswalk and, and to have a real crosswalk there would be a light when C dot does that. And we haven't hit that point yet. And then the other is crossing at the circle. So. But when it comes to the amount of use and the amount of, you know, and, and kind of the priorities as we've, as, as we've, we have loaded up that we do not have funds to do all those yet, even just the launch itself. I have a hard time seeing us doing this project before those. And so we, as we got this information, as we discussed it finally today, we just don't see proceeding with the design currently. We can talk more about it as we move forward. Naturally, we usually, you know, it's like, oh, this doesn't, the price number typically goes down in the future. So you want to do things sooner, but when you put it against all those other priorities, it's, and just knowing our cash flow, knowing the, the funds we have, it could be many years out before we're, we're getting to this.
Same these costs here.
Typically, yeah, yeah. 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 So we're, we're making the assumption based on the majority of projects that, you know, you're going to be in that. You're going to be somewhere in that. And this is a quarter of a mile or sorry, three. Four, four tenths of a mile section we built from Fruta to Loma in around $4 million. So, I mean, it gives you, it gives you an idea of like, how costs are going up for one. It's not, I mean, that, that's a, that's a big difference, but also it's a challenging connection with building. What you have to do just to go under the bridge and with the river and, and those types of things. And it might turn out that another connection ends up being a better, you know, fit as well. So we're, we just feel like it, it's more prudent to put a pause on it at the moment and wanted to let you all know that because it's something in our budget that we, for, for good reason. When we had 250,000 of zero city funds and a bid of 190, you know, we, we felt pretty good going into this budget year. But unfortunately, that's not the case at this point in time.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Anything else for Mark? All right. Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, Mark.
All right. We've got one more item on the administrative agenda, which is our last presentation for the circulation and corridor plan. Mike?
Yeah, this one, we, we are going to talk about the capital improvement plan at the June workshop. So it was something we originally were going to talk about at the May workshop. We, we canceled the May workshop. So we're going to get into what you've heard about a lot of things on the capital improvement plan by the time we talk about it. But there's other aspects that we need to talk through that. So leading up to that, we wanted to do an overview of the circulation plan, which is very tied to the land use code and the comprehensive plan. So Dan's going to give a, a, a high level overview of it. This is longer than the, the Frost. I'm just giving you a little bit of warning on that. Because there's a lot of, of detail that we have to, we have to cover because of current projects that we're within. So we also want to tell, he's got, we're going to cover 19 Road and some of the, the other, the other corridor projects in that area with 19 Road that we've got to be planning for as we plan ahead, not just next year, but in the, in the upcoming years. If you recall, and you'll, we'll have, you know, coming up, you still have updates on June 4th on wastewater capital and maintenance, the 2021 community survey results, highest priority is circulation, highest priority is traffic and control. And it's been that way for all surveys we've, we've done and with the community. We're going to talk about communications and engagement on the 4th. On the 17th, we're going to talk about all the contractual partnerships and city owned land facilities. And then on the workshop on the 24th of June, we will dive into the capital improvement plan. And just so you have an idea of what's coming up. So we'll turn the time over to Dan. We have the engineering, the whole engineering department here, in case there's some further detailed questions when we get into some of these road corridors, but that's the point of tonight. So we kind of pulled it out of capital improvement plan, also because we received bids for 19 Road. So we've got to talk about how to proceed with that.
Thanks, Mike. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Dan Karas. I'm the Planning Director for the City of Fruta. And just by way of introduction, we do have Steve, Chris, John and Sam. And, and certainly like everyone in the planning department, like this, these are the people that implement the circulation plan and certainly on the design and construction side. But it's also an aspirational document. It's a planning document. It's what every subdivision goes through and builds to as they're, as they're coming through the process. So it has a, it does have a pretty direct connection between community development and the engineering department. So since Mike went into kind of the local agency projects versus the city budgeted projects, we won't go through that, but just, just to like, touch on this real quick. You know, the background obviously is like, we're going to talk about the city circulation plan, some of the projects that are embedded in that and like how they're funded. So we got some federally funded and state funded projects that we just talked about. And then we also have the ones that are financed or, or that are built with general fund dollars or transportation impact fees or other development impact fees. And so we just wanted to kind of break those apart because I think they have like a different set of expectations associated with them. And, you know, which is, which is what Mike was touching on earlier. And then kind of wrap it up with 19 Road where we really do have the folks that actually know all of the information on the design and some of the constraints and some of the, the budgetary things that we've been faced with and how we've approached that. So at the end of that, we're going to kind of button that up with sort of what we've learned and propose somewhat of a, of a different rationale on how we want to take down some of these larger corridor projects and kind of a multi-step approach. The city has so many priorities and so many things that we're trying to, to get accomplished. So in the last 15 minutes, we proposed a pause on Highway 340 Trail. But I, I just wanted to say one brief thing about this since Mike did touch on this is when you, when you do these federally funded or state funded projects, you commit to them for a lot longer than you commit to the projects like 19 Road. I mean, when you start the process, the design process, obviously you've got the request for qualifications, but there is a process with C dot associated with that. So when you commit those dollars, you're somewhat committing well into the future, multiple years. They have a completely different time horizon. So I just wanted to break those apart because we don't always control those projects' destiny, although they might be grant funded and still have a lot of value, which I think is why Mike was trying to make the connection that the, the larger dollar amount is really when like you're willing to, you know, stick with it. And then you've got the local projects like 19 Road that are typically supported with general fund dollars. They're supported with transportation impact fee dollars, which are every house that gets built, they pay a fee because they're, they're an impact on the road system. And then these get baked into adding capacity or widening or increasing safety and circulation for the roadway system. If there's any regional trail connections, we can use parks, open space and trails fees. And then if there's any sewer lines that are extended with those projects, we can use plant investment fees and then place a recapture on that area and they pay that back as each home gets built. So that's kind of the stack, if you will, on how these projects come together when they're, they're specifically city funded. And this kind of follows the trajectory of how 19 Road has come to be as well. So I'm not going to go through all of the corridor projects in great detail, but I am going to share one example that Chris helped us, helped us put together that kind of explains some of the rationale on how we're going about this. So back in 2022, right on the heels of the land use code update, you can kind of see comp plan 2020, land use code 2021, parks, open space and trails, or the Frost Plan in the midst of that circulation plan. So you kind of see the trajectory of how you build on each of those, you know, sort of guiding principles or guiding document as the comp plan that you distill down in these specific areas. The circulation plan being one of them, since when we established a new future land use map, that's where the grid goes out to, is it matches our future land use map on where we plan to grow into. So this is the street classifications map. Like, as you can see, that like sort of yellowish highlighted area that is within those red boundaries, that's not the city yet. And then you see all of the, you know, the, the municipal boundaries that is etched and filled in with white. And then the different colors, those different colors represent different street classifications. So they're not what's there today, they're what's there in the future. And so we have all these different road sections that are within our circulation plan that local development engineers and developers pull out of our plan when they propose a project or we propose to complete a street. And so this is essentially the roadmap on how you build roads when you're on the edge of the community or how we complete streets where there might still be some vacant lots that are within that boundary. Great example of that, we have a complete street on Pine, but we've got some vacant land at the intersection at the north, a west intersection of Pine and Ottley and the southeast intersection of Pine and Ottley. So you've got two pretty, pretty big parcels, but like all the infrastructure's there. The sidewalks there, the roadways there, like it's built for the future. So that's a complete street when there's still vacant parcels around it. But this is the map that we reference all the time when we're working with development engineers and the like. And specifically with the corridor projects, we're talking about the major arterials, which is the 19 Road corridor. And we're talking about all those blue connections between Fremont Street, which is 18 and a half and 19 Road as you go north. So that's J, J2, J6, all the way up to Ottley. So that's kind of the purpose of the discussion today with the future corridors. Why we think it's important to invest, Mike touched on this, obviously the survey results, the number one big thing that's always talked about is making sure we stay ahead of like any sort of congestion that we might, that we might experience and that we're not necessarily building these roads out in a reactive fashion, but we're getting out in front of them. And that's why we made the policy decisions with the transportation impact fees. And that's certainly why we've committed to the voters when we've asked for the override with Tabor that we, we use those for, for a street or capacity related projects and maintenance. We feel in the planning and in the engineering department that it's somewhat of a pay me now, pay me later. We've seen a lot of other neighboring communities struggle with like putting in the road systems after all the growth is there. And so obviously like the council budgeted for the 19 Road improvements. And so we feel very well supported in the fact that the council is interested in us completing those streets rather than letting all that growth occur and then building that infrastructure afterwards. We believe that also it, it causes less maintenance. So if you can follow this rationale, I will butcher this and I will not fault you if you ask somebody else to come up and explain this to you better. But, but when you have different development engineers and different projects all submitting designs along a corridor, you get everybody's personal idea of what should happen. And so when the city goes and we design those corridors, we hand that design to those development engineers and they build out at what we want it to be in the future. And when we decide to do like what we're doing with 19 Road, we don't have a bunch of roadway closures like on Ottley. We complete the street and we, we reduce the impacts from other projects or surrounding projects from infiltrating into the actual like roadway and having to do any widening. Perfect example, nobody's talking to the general public without the exception of like the weekly update about some of the projects that are happening like West Canyon on Ottley and Pine, because they're not going to be in the street. They're going to do a connection to sewer and water and then they're going to be on site to do those improvements rather than widening the roadways like we experienced with Rose Creek and others. So there's kind of a different, that, that's the difference in the rationale. And so we believe that's less of a obstruction for the general public and for the community and keeps circulation going. So this is kind of the age old question is like development should pay its own way. Our, our view on this is they certainly should pay their own way. But kind of what I was mentioning before, lack of con, uh, contiguity with the design work. We end up with missing sections of roadway when they're building along the frontage. And then we kind of lose on the dollar cost averaging of the transportation impact fees when we're saving all those up that were paid by yesterday's inflationary rate and we use that money into the future to build those roads. It doesn't really speak to building at the dollar for dollar cost for the infrastructure that's needed on the roadways. So we think that, you know, saving up all the, those transportation impact fees and general fund dollars and then doing a big project might actually cost us in the long run and we'll be ending up playing catch up. So we'd like to get out in front of that and start to build these roadways before all the growth gets there. So these are the corridor projects that are, I think, broken into maybe several hundred little tiny projects within the circulation plan. But these represent the major frontages and the major corridors that are going to need to be improved that are within our growth boundary that lacks sanitary sewer drainage related infrastructure, antiquated irrigation systems, they might not have dry utilities in there. They might just be your basic farm to market road that will be built to a different standard that mirrors the circulation plan. So just by way of, of kind of an example, Chris helped put this together. And this is J Road, this is Wildcat Boulevard. It's kind of shows that, that sort of farm to market road feel where it has inconsistency with right of way width. It's got a lack of sewer in the roadway that has open ditches. There's no pedestrian facilities and it's got a canal crossing. And we need to move some of the overhead power and get it out of the right of way and into multipurpose easements. So we just think this is a great way to communicate with the general public about what these future classifications are going to look like. So you see this street mix rendition that shows kind of where the sidewalk's going to be, where the curb and gutter are going to be, and then where the drive lanes and the center lanes are going to be for, for J Road. We have started to work on the design to get to 30% for J Road because we, we believe and hopefully the council does as well that like if we build the 19 Road corridor, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to not connect to J Road, which is our, our primary roadway that has all of our schools. We think we'll be competitive, hopefully with the Safe Routes to School Grant and potentially even marrying that to the Fremont intersection as well. And then we, we believe J6, which is kind of the next, which has rimrock on it. And then just start connecting those north legs on, on 18 and a half Road or Fremont to try and get greater circulation throughout the community. So that's, that's kind of the, the way that we'd like to go. And in order to get that accomplished, we've got to do the, the, the engineering and design work upfront and then understand what our right of way needs, communicate that to the council and then put together a multi-year project. So this is kind of just a back of the envelope, uh, uh, cost estimate according to our staff here, which essentially contemplates that we would consider building this roadway in 2026. We are 30% design and we would have to initiate the right of way acquisition process here with the next year's budget process in order to meet that goal or that timeline. Why that's important is that all of you've heard a number of times that like right of way acquisition takes quite a while to do. And so it does. And so it doesn't make a good degree of sense to budget construction dollars when you're waiting to uh acquire all the uh the real estate that you need in order to build the road. So that's just an example of one of the um uh one of the corridors. If you want us to go into greater detail, I suggest finding somebody else to do that. But um but uh that is kind of the quick and dirty on like one of them. Uh the council has also uh supported the the staff with uh we've got a hundred thousand dollars budgeted in this year's uh budget. From a recent appropriation to uh put a general civil engineering um consultant under contract. We've went through the RFP process and selected SGM. We also uh went through uh the RFP process to uh select a right away consultant. So now the city has an on-call uh right away um acquisition group, which is a project's resources. To be able to go and acquire the right away if we are supported with the the dollars to go to construction for one of these corridors. These are the biggies, these are the things that like if you try and do in the same year you're constructing, you're doing the construction project the next year. So in an effort to not tie up general fund resources, we think this is really important and it's a minimal investment to keep us on track. So we're not um you know tying up money in in uh any any one budget year. And we're planning these things with design and right away and then construction in a future budget cycle. So for the nineteen road improvements, um uh one of the reasons why we're investing, obviously we put uh. I think it was close to three or four million dollars into the highway six sewer interceptor extension back in two thousand and nineteen. I can't remember exactly what the dollar amount was, but the the construction of that uh extension translated into about a two thousand dollar per house. Recapture fee for the extension of that line. So we knew back in two thousand and nineteen when we decided to do that project, that nineteen road was going to experience a lot of growth. I mean, that was a calculated uh uh investment. And we've seen a number of projects uh start to land in that area with Iron Wheel and with Copper Creek. So as a result, we're we're responding to the development pressures, the school traffic and any future congestion with that many homes being built on. On what is essentially a farm to market road.
And I I would add when we when we extended that sewer, we we had a financial contribution from Iron Wheel. That helped go towards the match of a of a Department of Local Affairs grant to build that. We also put a and bring that sewer over, that was the big sewer project. Some of you may remember and some may be aware that the um the first um construction company was not able to finish it. And so we have, we have high water tables, we had some really challenging areas and they just, they weren't able to finish that. We had to actually, you know, it's not one of those things you want to do, but we had to go, we had to stop, we had to go with a new construction company. Um and that and you know, we're in that, there's there's similar conditions and and some of the uh we're we're really happy with uh who will have on nineteen road. They can, they can do it. Um they actually, they're the ones that came and bailed us out with the 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 first group. So uh we know they can do it. Um but the point is, when we received that grant and we did that financial contribution, we put what's called a recapture agreement on on that. And so now um across nineteen road for that section of sewer that 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 was extended to that point. Um Copper Creek is paying, so they pay the fees, but they're also paying a recapture fee. Cause they didn't have to extend that sewer, it was extended uh ahead of time for them. And it's something we we could be talking about doing or possibly possibly not along nineteen road heading north. There's some pieces, there's there's times where it makes sense for us to 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 cover the costs and there's times where we have to, you know. And so just wanted to point that out that as it was extended, calculated to know that's going to start growth going north on nineteen road. But also we're getting paid back for the our portion of that cost. And then we had a grant and Iron Wheel paid a portion as well.
So this is the nineteen road corridor with like a three di- a three dimensional street rendering. That shows a three lane section, which with a a detached eight foot path on the east side of the road. Not the west side of the road, but the east side of the road. So purpose being that we would want to be able to get any growth that happens on the east side of the nineteen road alignment. Those folks being able to interact with that path and and cross at particular crossings, which would likely be at J Road. So that's the safety concern we had. We also kind of make that made that calculated decision because Iron Wheel was extending the Independence Ranches. Uh path that is going through their subdivision that will eventually make its way all the way to uh the intersection of Wildcat and Fremont. So uh it seemed like it made a good degree of sense to put that pedestrian facility on the east side of nineteen road. It doesn't look like a uh what you would normally see. Uh uh it's doesn't look like a Ottley, it doesn't look like a Pine, it doesn't look like some other thing that I can't think of right now. But uh but it's built all in the location for it being that enhanced travel corridor, which is eventually a five lane section. Many, many years into the future. And so what we wanted to avoid having to do was going back into the roadway many years down the line. We wanted to be able to just do, to just widen and be able to build that five lane section. So that's why it doesn't look um exactly like uh our major collector, exactly like the hundred foot right away. That is uh that is in the circulation plan. But it's an investment in the future that's going to work for today, but it's also not going to cost the city uh a ton of money uh into the future. When we have to actually turn that into its full enhanced travel corridor.
Dan, is that brown section, um is that paved or is that going to be dirt? What is, what does that look like?
It's a borrow ditch.
Okay.
So, yeah.
What is it?
It's a ditch. It's it's a long roadways to handle any of the roadway or any of the tailwater from from surrounding properties.
Couple of questions for you, Dan. What, why are we only doing a sidewalk on one side and not both sides of that road?
I'd like to phone a friend on that. I think part of the reason is that uh cost, part of the reason is also where all the utilities are going to be located. So trying to do as minimal amount of uh of underground work as possible. But uh the the reality of the situation is that where everything is going to fit into the future. It made most sense since that was going to work, land where most of the utilities were going to be were on the east side with the exception of the sewer. Um so that was also where all of the drainage facilities were. So we kind of did a scope reduction there and we didn't really also want to put the pedestrian facility all out in no man's land. You know, and we wanted to hug it tight to the road. So that's that's my understanding of why we decided to do that.
Availability that, because you're talking right now that we had three lane plan is for long. It planned now to have a five lane in the future, does that allow for sidewalk on the on the the west side at some point? Cause I understand like not necessarily building it out completely now, but is that in the plans of having a five lane plus sidewalks on both sides?
But that is the plan.
Yeah, that that would, that would be that.
Here's the phone a friend.
Sam Hethconne City Engineer. Um so the pedestrian path is ultimately sacrificial. It it shows up like it's concrete, but it's actually just an asphalt eight foot wide path. Um in the future road section, I believe it's a twelve foot wide path on the west side. Cause we're ultimately going to have a hundred feet of right away. It's it's not going to be like the Ottley where the sidewalk is right on that back. It'll be offset.
And I think, you know, I I think it's hard, sometimes it's hard to imagine a five lane in Prudhoe, right? Um but as we fill, as that growth area fills in, and this isn't a new, I mean, it's been. L Road and nineteen Road have been planned to be of the this major corridor for decades, right? Cause you have to create a way to go around a city versus everything coming through. And and the congestion being too much to get in and out. Um we're not there yet, but when everything's filled in, then you would have that. And then to Aaron's point, then it would, you could complete it to a complete road section for what that road section is supposed to be without having to redo.
There's still space to have sidewalks on both sides, have the full five lanes as that's needed.
Yeah.
So this is this, this is. So it's got that footpath that's separated by seven feet.
There's sidewalks on both sides. But this is not what's going to be done this later. But this is the end result of years down the road.
And and keep in mind nineteen road, this project, this is like, this is J two south to six and fifty. So that's as far north as it goes.
With with you mentioning J and two tens, so there's another development that's just there on the south side of J and two tens and eight uh nineteen road. When we go to that, part of the road improve, have those road improvements. Like that new subdivision, are we, are they going to have utilities? Are we stubbing utilities into that property? So we don't like when we lay a final pavement, we're not cutting into it again. Cause that's part of the value of building right now is so that we can have a finished product. And we don't have something that's like on seventeen and K and six tens where that, that sucker's chopped up horribly. And I can only imagine how that's going to be in a couple of years on the taxpayers' dime instead of contractors should have just done it right and we done the whole day road section eighty percent of the way. Um is that what's going to happen with?
Yeah, so when the, so right now the sewer is on the west side of nineteen road. We actually skip over to the other side of the road, so it would be outside of the pavement section, so they could tie on without.
Having to interrupt the road, oh good. Cause that's, because I I appreciate the the foresight that we're having on nineteen road is to build it first. Build something really nice, get reimbursed down the road, I think that's that's.
Yeah.
Cheaper now than down down when those projects are all done in the next few years.
Hey, Dan, I think Chris has something to add to that one, yeah.
Step up to the mic.
Well, I did uh the underground design on nineteen road. And uh we are actually stubbing in um sewer and storm drain into the Adele's property. So they shouldn't have to get.
That's the J and two tens property, okay.
Um uh Weston is supposed to go the other direction, yep. So um yeah, we are doing that. What's difficult about um predicting where to put these kind of cross connections, if you will. Is uh when a development comes in, they can kind of put their their road, you know, wherever. So we don't always know where to put the manhole with the, you know, the pipe across the road. So in the future, there will be some, ki- kind of like uh Dan saying with West Canyon. They are going to come out into Pine Street briefly to tie into the sewer. But it's not going to be the type deal where they're shutting down Pine Street for two months. So um to answer the question about Adele's, yes, we are stubbing in there, but we can't. We don't really know where to stub into a lot of these parcels that aren't developing yet.
And I assume you're trying to give, if they'll give that information to you sooner or later, that'd be great.
Um that'd be great, but yeah, you you just can't, we don't know when they're coming in.
Designs on the front side or not, aren't they?
Uh they sure are. That's why we're trying to do this, we're getting ahead of stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Real briefly, I just wanted to explain the the kind of practical components associated with what we're trying to accomplish. So this is the the, this is the corridor project I was talking about between Fremont and nineteen roads. You can see kind of north of J Road, there is a lot of parcels that have been subdivided with very little frontage. So to me and to us and to the group, we feel like this is a city project that's north of um of J Road from the center line. Just because it's not reasonable to assume that all of these properties are going to develop and just extend the roadway with such minor frontage along J Road. So part of the rationale is 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 using some of the existing conditions today. That kind of drives some of the decisions that we're trying to make into the future. So clearly that's um that's that's a candidate for uh for us doing uh a city sponsored project. Rather than just letting development uh pay its own way. Whereas you can see kind of south of J Road from the center line, there are a lot of large parcels that are are likely to develop. You know, in the future that are gonna, that are gonna build out, also ones that are connected uh with Iron Wheel. So I think our our chances of being able to get these properties to develop is relatively small. Cause for example, you know, this property right here, which you know, could be close to twenty acres. Look at how much frontage it has to J Road. That's what they would typically be responsible for constructing. Granted, they have a lot of frontage along Fremont, but still like, you know, you kind of have to make that calculated decision. Are we going to be first or are these projects going to be first?
Couple of questions with that, Dan. With some of this property being county property, will they be, will be, there will be a chance to get them to contribute to? I think you put an estimate of like four and a half million bucks, or is it just all on our dime? Cause we want to do it, only support us in in improving.
I always ask. I think uh I think we can ask, but they really have no incentive for taking county parcels and paying for them to become to city standards, right? It it happens when those annex in because of a new development. I think what Dan's saying is because we kind of have this county section in the center of this of the city. The likelihood of all those developing at the same time and and enough happening without like these small sections occurring sporadically. Puts it a little bit more on us if we want a full city street. Now we can, we can have some recaptures, so when they develop, you know, we get, we get a little bit paid back because we put it in. Um if these were large parcels, kind of like what you're seeing on nineteen road. Um you know, there could be some more oppor- opportunity for that that are that are vacant and things like that. But some of these parcels, um because we're not forcing them to annex, obviously, you know. They could, they could stay there for many years, just staying as a a county parcel, right? And and unless they redevelop, somebody new buys it, wants to redevelop it, put some multiple houses on. But they're pretty small from a standpoint of the frontage and I think that's what, so the likelihood. Um I I I'd be surprised if we could get them to to pay for city standards on a section like that when they're. When they are trying to prioritize their larger corridor projects that are, you know, throughout the county. I I don't, I it's hard to speak for them, it's 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 always worth asking. Um honestly, in one way, eh rather than project based, we probably should um engage them again. Where there was uh when there were some changes many years ago, and Margaret could speak to this better than I. But decades ago, when uh the county started doing something where they used to give us a certain amount of funds to put towards streets and roads every year. It was a hundred thousand a year, uh sometimes two hundred thousand a year. We often combine that with overlays and things like that. Um kind of during the uh or right, right around the, just before the pandemic, actually, I think. I don't even think it was tied to the pandemic, it was like, like eighteen, maybe somewhere in the seventeen, eighteen. They just said, we're not doing it anymore and uh currently. And I I I think it's worth asking for because we are in the county. Um it wasn't, they have a one, you know, not that the county just has endless funds, but from a capital standpoint, they they have a a good generation each year. And so supplying a portion, you know, if we could get back to that, then we could maybe put it towards things like this. But um it's going to be hard from a, I don't know, I I'll belabor it, but I hopefully that helps.
I I think uh another uh salient point with that is this is a little bit different than how we've done it in the past. So we might be able to get some traction with uh, we're gonna ask. And we're gonna buy some right away and complete a street, that's not really how we've done it. So there might be uh a a sales pitch there on like, hey, we're going to take a a county roadway and upgrade it. And it's to the benefit of county residents as well as city residents and.
And maybe maintenance, you don't no longer have to maintain it, we're maintaining it, there's some up.
Say, Mr. Mayor, thanks for the survey uh antenna guard that you gave us, that was really cool. Mr. Williams, sorry, I almost ran you over the other day. I don't know if you noticed, but that was me. It was an accident. Anyway, yeah, so um wi- within the.
Next person, please.
So we're gonna, we're gonna build a a full one point two miles worth of uh improvements. This includes. So we're gonna we're gonna build a full one point two miles worth of improvements. This includes. All of the infrastructure that we already talked about, the underground stuff on this slide. A brand new box culvert in the canal that'll be poured in place. That thing's like a hundred and forty feet long. It's a big, nice box culvert to improve that area. And then improved intersections at both J road and highway six and fifty. Here's a little aerial of the box culvert, just to give you an idea of the scope of that project. It's not. Focused north. I had to shift it so I could get a rectangular photo on my little slide, but there you have it. And then I took a picture, I stole a picture from the internet of highway six and fifty. Right now, it's a shared lane coming out onto the highway. We worked with C dot to. Come up with a design that accommodates a WB fifty class truck turning right off of nineteen road. And allows for a free. Left hand turn as well. So it'll be a much, much safer intersection. We're gonna move the traffic pole into a raised island. That'll separate those two turning lanes as well.
Absolutely certain that a truck can turn right.
I calculated it based on a some pretty fancy tools. Yeah, that's so the inside lane. The inside lane follows the.
Calling you.
The the inside lane follows the front wheel as it's turning with some space to accommodate that raised island, but then. That back wheel of that truck won't go any further than the outside lane. And if it does, call me.
Don't believe me.
I'm Steve Martinez, by the way. I'm not sure if I said that. Nice to meet all of you. This is the current situation at J road. We all know and get calls all the time about the congestion, especially during the school year. It's a four way stop and we're gonna keep it a four way stop, but it's gonna look more like this. This is based on traffic studies for twenty twenty five warrants, but we're gonna build it so that you've got a free right. And left coming off of J road. This is oriented north and south, so nineteen road is up and down, right? And then on the other side of J road, we'll improve it just enough to get traffic safely through the intersection. It doesn't really show it on this, but it it'll merge into the existing asphalt. On the far east side there as it as you're traveling east through the intersection. But, yeah, we're gonna. Uh, work with the other subdivision in the northwest to create that. To create the the pedestrian ramp and sidewalk that's gonna run north of J road. And then future improvements can tie into this as we work our way west on J road as well. And I think that actually gives us gets us back to the budget. Do you want to speak to this or do you want to?
So, I mean, much to their credit, I mean, like, I take absolutely no, you know, credit whatsoever to this, but we we began acquiring the right away in twenty twenty three. Like I said before, that's a fairly lengthy process. By the time all of that is said to be done. It is going to be in the ballpark of six hundred thousand dollars with three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars remaining from the twenty twenty three budget that was budgeted for. The right away acquisition to all of their credit, like they prior to going to bid. And while going to bid, we made the conscientious decision to take a lot of the material. Purchase out of the project and purchase it prior to going to bid. So we did not experience any of the inflationary costs associated to. To the project that was, you know, a close to four hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment. Where we were a little concerned about where we were going to store it. And just because you can't like just leave it in the yard, you know, for for a period of time. We made an investment into SGM designing the box culvert, which was a part of the plan set that went to the the bid docs, but the design work happened outside of the. Of the bid process and then ultimately. You know, it distills down to a low bidder of which was MA concrete that is in that five point eight million dollar range. That comes with a what seems like a healthy force account or contingency of five hundred thousand dollars. But when you consider the size and scope of the project and that all the materials are out of there, all the right aways out of there, all the designs out of there. And I mean, that, you know, that it could certainly be utilized, you know, or needed to be able to. To put, you know, the underground infrastructure in their ground in difficult conditions. So that kind of totals the the project at at right around seven million dollars, which is an estimated overage based off of the six million dollar budget of. About a million bucks, but bear in mind that million dollars then gets minus. Against that three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So we're about a seven hundred thousand dollar difference. And then that force account is not planned to be used for anything, so it is. It is living there as contingency. So I think in our estimation, just considering how like volatile the bid process has been like. And I think it's to the credit of the of the designers, you know, Steve designing the roadway and and Chris designing the underground. Infrastructure and constantly, you know, evaluating what those costs are. They add up all the the bid items and quantities associated with the project contractors put. A budget to that. And so, you know, this hasn't been our story all the time, but like the, you know, being over by seven hundred, eight hundred thousand. Is is pretty is pretty decent considering that there's a half a million dollar force account in there.
I would add.
Difference between a force account and a contingency account.
They're kind of interchangeable with one another, the same thing.
And then I I would add to that that so what we've been doing since we received the bid. And these guys have been working on kind of getting it us to this point. Is looking at what impact fees we can add to this project. And then obviously, some of the sewer, some of the sewer costs would come out of the sewer fund as well. But the impact fees, we were we're still narrowing that down and and just to give you an idea, so we we collect impact fees, they go into. You know, in I think it's after twenty twenty or sometime in two thousand nineteen. Their their now their revenues now, their liabilities prior to that, right? Because. If you don't spend impact fees, there's there's the chance that developers can come back after like seven years and unless and and there's there's more to it. It's not as simplified as that, but. And request them back. You didn't you charge me a fee and never put it towards an expansion need. The way we look at impact fees in general, this isn't a hundred percent exact, but we kind of have and we're we're developing a a policy. To more fine tune this since the change from liabilities to revenues. Is that the easy one is if impact fees are collected on the north side of Fruta, they go towards, let's say, first, let's just just take like. The transportation impact fee, for example. If it's taken on the north side of Fruta. We're not typically going to use those impact fees for some kind of expansion project on the south side of Fruta, or if it's if they were collected on the south or the north. You do have some local room when it's big corridor projects, you know, it's just our crossing right now, our C dots, they're not typically projects we're doing, but if we if we actually had city roads going north and south, you could justify more than that. And then we look, we kind of look at eighteen and a half road or Pine Road as kind of that center. Road that, let's say, we're on the north side of Fruta. And we're collecting impact fees. Anywhere on the east, we might be able to use them on an impact anywhere east of eighteen and a half. We're doing something on eighteen and a half, we could use them from both sides, right? If so, that. Again, this isn't exact, but just to give you a picture, so looking at what we have available from the northeast side of Fruta and impact fees that are unspent, undesignated. We have another four or it's it's somewhere in the between four hundred thousand and five hundred thousand that we can put towards nineteen road and and fully justified and adding to this project. As Dan was mentioning, when you start taking the force account, you put that in like we're getting much close, we're 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 pretty close there, assuming if you don't spend all the force account. But there's gonna be things that come out, so I don't want to make it sound like force accounts is just a pretty thing that's there. There 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 will be, there there always are things that that come up in these construction projects. It's why you have to have something like that. Now, we don't have a, we we definitely don't have a track record and there's no track record, just obviously just spending it all every time and 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 those types of things. So we are, we're gonna have to come to you real soon or or soon looking at it. I mean, the project is gonna start in November. It's gonna go into next year's budget. So utilizing some of these impact fees, looking at when some of the construction is happening next year as we budget for next year. We we're still working that out, but one once you know, we there's gonna be some movement in some form or fashion to meet, you know, the increase in budget, but. This is where we're at at the moment. And and so we're, you know. We always would love to see a lower number. I would say there was some internal relief at 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 these bids. You know, from the standpoint of we estimated six million. Obviously, there's there's money spent out of that six million that we have for, you know, that helped with this these price, this price or the pricing we received, but. There were a lot of nerves that it could have been a lot more and and so we're and and it's an excellent firm with MA Construction to to do this work as they they brought the sewer, you know, west. Or east for us as well and have done a number of possible really good projects, so.
Just Mike, I'm sorry. Do I understand you correctly? There's. When we look at what's currently collected impact, he's between four or five hundred thousand, but there's still the opportunity next year for additional clawback. Or additional impact fees being at above the four to.
Yeah, we're also we're also looking at that because, again, we are, yeah, you you're right. This is not. Project that that number that I'm talking about between four and five hundred thousands already on the books. We're just trying to separate. We haven't by location and so just at a quick glance today, just trying to prepare for tonight. We don't have the exact number yet, but we're we're in between that that. So we know we have. That much, but that's not including all these houses that are gonna pay impact fees. And of course. We're building this ahead of time, as was explained earlier. Where those impact fees typically, if we were coming in later, which is more disruptive and all those other things, but we'd be using those towards that expansion. So. We're looking at, you know, what are the what are the the proper ways to go through? Because of that order of operations, but yes, you're right, there'll be future impact fees coming in as well. It could go towards this.
How old is the that? We had that six million dollar estimate from. From the design. How old is that six million dollar estimate? Is that a feat? That's a couple of years old, so. Yeah, so it's that's just. Yeah, we all know how the economy is going. How did the the right away acquisition experience go? Because, you know, nobody loves to have their property.
Yeah.
Even even if though you're getting compensated, nobody loves that, especially out here in the west. We a lot of us try to go after property to have a little elbow room. And so how did that experience go?
Yeah, we have a contracted person, but Steve was working closely, so I think it'd be good for, do you want to share a little bit of?
It's actually still going on. That's actually, and I think that that speaks to the lessons that we've learned. On why we feel like we need to get going on right away acquisition moving forward in a new project as well. And I know that that doesn't answer your question, but. Right now, we've got people that obviously aren't super thrilled, but we're keeping it positive and I feel like it's going really well. We are, we haven't made contact with everybody. There have been some people that have been hard to reach, but we're still working on that. But our acquisition specialist is confident that we'll have all of the properties offered and purchased by the middle of August.
And how much on like, what's the biggest? Because we're just, of course, taken from the. The existing right away or property lines and coming back off. At what's like the biggest chunk that people are taking off, just that?
It's about twenty feet.
Twenty feet.
Yeah, that's the largest section that that somebody would actually be, you know, having it purchased from them. That gives us a full, the full width of fifty feet on the east side and forty feet on the west side. So that we can build this corridor right now. But there are the things that go into it, you know, there's fences and there's, you know, there's trees, there's a lot of things that we have to consider and we have to be really mindful of people's feelings about that. So that's what we've been doing and we're working hard on it.
This this does go back as as Steve's mentioning to what Dan was saying earlier, what we're doing with Fremont right now, where we're already, you know, we've been budgeting and trying to. But this is a good example of, you know, lesson learned and as we're looking at ahead. Where we don't want to have, you know, where we're where we're trying to do construction and trying to get right away, you know, in the same in the same year. Part of that was it it didn't fully get done last year, and so we were doing it this year, but we want to try and get this going at this, you know, this November. But as we're looking ahead and starting to look further ahead on some of these corridor projects like like this area. Getting early, having somebody on call, not each project, getting someone. So I mean, so what you heard earlier, some of it's a result of some of the lessons learned going through these. This this project, which is one of our, I mean, honestly, one of our largest road projects we've ever done. I mean, prior to this, I guess Pine Street would probably be the the biggest full section in the Otley. Pine and Otley, I would imagine, but but nothing like this, so.
The the structure that's close to nineteen right on right on the corner of J and nineteen, is that gonna, will that be taken out?
Yeah, that that is, it's been deemed unsafe. It can't be moved. It doesn't have a foundation on it or anything like that, so. She'll be compensated for the removal of that building.
Two, aren't they right close to the road too?
Yeah, and I've, you know, we've we've had conversations where some of those trees might be able to be saved, where we can just trim them to make the bike path safe. But we're not gonna really know, you know, the extent, because we're also putting storm drains in there and so the root damage could be something that we need to consider. These are all things that are being, the the homeowners are fully aware of all of these things, and so the the that's why they're gonna get compensated full for the tree, whether or not the tree gets removed. You know, but yeah, does that answer your question?
It does. That was the, every time I drive through there, I'm like, oh, that's really close. Like, that's definitely gonna have to go. Thank you.
I think the only other thing that we have to add is that we are staying in close communication with all of the other surrounding partners, obviously, the. The neighbors that are affected through the right away acquisition process have been notified by us and by our consultant. We hosted a a meeting of. It was a few, it was a few months back or quite a few months back with all the irrigators that are along. Nineteen road that can be affected, and so they've been communicated with. We have a meeting next week with the school district to talk about. How the closures are going to work and we're also going to be speaking with. Transportation for America, you know, just to come up with a detour plan while there is a a full closure. So. Yeah, obviously, I think we wanted to paint the picture that, you know, several people are involved in this project and and, you know, we're we're trying to, you know. Dot all of our i's and cross all of our t's, but like it's a complicated project. It's a big project and. So we are doing that.
Yeah, me it.
Uh, I kind of know where. Thank you. Okay. We're gonna have to communicate like crazy and when people done go a little bit further because it's. The little interruptions I had. Were frustrating and I'm just, I was one of five homes that was impacted by, but this is gonna be.
This will be big. This will be the majority of next school year when you really think about the construction time, so. And the the next week meeting with the school district, not the first, Matthew was with us when we mentioned it last year. We've been talking to him and it's kind of. They've been planning when it's time for them to start, you know, planning on on preparing for those detours and. But you're right, it's we've got to over communicate and we're already, I I hopefully you're seeing some of the communications we're doing now and. The new transportation disruption kind of it's not called that. Traffic. They're all gonna be mad at me for that. Our traffic impact updates and just different things that we've we've added this year to try and start, you know, because. Because the the progress does cause temporary disruptions, right? And 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 detours and things like that. But this is a bigger one. This is bigger than, you know, a month or a week or, you know, things like that. So, yeah.
I think there's also going to be times where there's full closure, partial closure, where like some of the work is. Some of the work will begin for a month or two down the line. Like, it's gonna be, it's gonna call for quite a bit of of dialogue with the general public and and with all of the. All the partners that are associated with the project, because we've got, you know, telecommunications, we've got overhead power, we've got U water, we've got, I mean, there's a lot of players here, so.
And construction will be happening on homes during that time, too.
Yeah.
Be building out.
And we we.
It's gonna be fun.
I'll put, yeah.
We look forward to.
Been asking questions along the way, but. Before we let Dan and team. Sit.
Thanks for bringing the team.
Thank you awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, how are you guys holding up? We're good?
Good. You know how I am.
I I that's why I'm. I that's why I'm asking.
We're almost done and then I can come through.
Yep. Okay, just one double check. All right.
Right.
We don't know for sure.
Yeah. All right, Mike.
Sure.
There's a lot of pressure here.
All right.
Pun intended.
Okay.
Tell us, do we need a break or not?
Okay, that's the answer. Let's take, let's take a five minute recess.
To take a five.
Oh, yeah, I just said five minute recess. Yeah.
The answer is um.
All right, all right. It is nine fifteen.
All right.
We are back at it.
Okay.
Mike, would you please lead us through the city manager's report?
Yes, thank you. First thing I wanted to let you know is that a written letter of offer to U water for the remaining mountain properties per our resolution to start making those offers to U water. Obviously, they have first right of refusal. And then we were going to go to Mesa County and US Forest. Well, if we add to US Forest Service, Colorado Parks and Wildlife. So we're in that process. That just went out yesterday to U water. We asked them to let us know by June, I think it was the 14th or 15th. And then based on that response, we'll continue with the direction you all gave us. So I wanted you to let, wanted to let you know that actually went out now. Also, that Friday, we close on 169 South Mulberry. So all the agreements, no terms changed. And you all through resolution and authorized me to carry those through into the and to be enabled to close on the property, but we are signing all the agreements at the same time. So I can't per your direction, I can't close unless we have the development agreement signed and the parking agreement signed and the encroachment agreement and the right away. So all those are completed. So Friday, we close on that. And then so right on June 4th at your next meeting. And at the beginning of the meeting, proclamations and presentations, no requests or anything, but the new owners are coming and they're going to present what they're going to start doing from a construction redevelopment standpoint on that. So just to give you an update. And so I'll be at the beginning of the the next regular meeting. Following this closing. And then reminder, next week, we have no workshop without you all. We had canceled that. And then tomorrow, we have the Colorado Municipal League Spring Outreach Meeting that I think Amy, Janine, Rich, myself and Shannon are attending in Palisade. And so we have a good, we've got good representation there. And we're going to meet here. We have to be there at, it starts at five o'clock. So we're going to leave here at 4:30. Reason I bring that up too is that today, even though we started with like torrential rains, the the plan still went through where the stamped concrete was added around the downtown restroom. So the same, you know, stamped concrete that we have throughout downtown. They got that all completed today. There's a few things to do tomorrow, but but we believe we could, we could, we technically could open that up by the end of the day tomorrow. We would like to get it open with a few days before the weekend, just in case there's some things to work out. You know what I mean? Be before there's less people on hand or we're calling people back. Internally, we've talked and we wanted to get your feedback. And this is my last update. If do we want to do just some very simple kind of fun? Almost less for the crowd to show up, but more for the photo and social media posts that it's open. And then we can, we can also in that provide some information like how the cost compared to regular bathrooms and some of the things that have been brought up and how it works and those kinds of things. All right, you know, you can, you can hate it, love it, change it. But a thought we had was, do we do something as simple as, and this is only if if you all could show up? Or at least some of you and and willing to do, we could, we could go as early as tomorrow at four o'clock. Because some of us are leaving at 4:30. We could have a big. So the one idea is a big roll of toilet paper going across. And you you break that toilet paper and there's a photo and then we announce it's open and things like that. Maybe the mayor breaks toilet paper and walks in the bathroom with.
You know, so far I've gotten a pie in the face. Toilet paper. The glamour of this job is not lost on me.
I think you walk through it, you grab that piece and you go right on in.
Background.
And you do the first flush.
Absolutely.
But we know that's rushed. Part of it, though, we don't, and it's up to you all if you want to do something bigger than that. But in in some ways, I think we just want to get it opened. I should rephrase that. But we we'd like to get it open and get the usage. People are excited to use it. There's no more work to be done. We'd hate to just hold it for. No, there's too many. Too many unintended puns. I apologize.
That that sounds like a plan. I know I can make tomorrow.
Four o'clock.
Yeah.
I can beat it.
All right. We'll flush this thing out.
All right, should we do it? I mean, this would be super.
Tomorrow.
Super quick.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
All right, we'll move into council reports and action items. James. Oh, I did. I thought you were just saying, no, I'm not. All right, Amy.
Um, I did. I'm actually really glad Mark's still here because I forgot I was needed to ask about, um, do we have any potential on the horizon for nets over spectator areas at Salt Wash? Like for the baseball field area?
We were talking about that at Parks and Rec Commission meeting.
Okay, cool. It's like there's conversations happening.
Yes, there are conversations that.
Yeah, a cover.
Mark will.
Well, they have, yeah, so like.
Mark said we can do whatever we wanted.
Mark, here to address the question.
So the netting over all of that area, it would be very, very expensive. And the to put it up and down, take it up and down because of the snow during the winter. The structures, those backstops are not designed to hold that load. And so I I think there'd be potential for some damage. I did call after Prab, right? Over the spectator areas where they have like bleachers, right? I'm getting quotes and pricing on like a shade structure. So when you look at just a net, yes, that protects you from a foul ball. But when you're playing baseball in May and June and July there, it gets hot. And so why not?
Yeah.
Put a protective covering and you know, that shade, I I think is a better option. So we are looking at, I mean, I think they're 20 by 30 structures, 20 foot by 30 foot structures. Look at some cantilever designs and then also four posts, right? Because I want to have posts in the middle of the viewing. So looking at some different options for out there. But yeah.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Yep. The added two with it is that it can be taken down during.
Yeah, that's great.
Like over the.
Shade sail type things. Yeah, yeah, I love that. That's.
So a lot of facilities are starting to go to those type of designs. Like I've seen like out at Palisade Little League and Monument Little League, they have the netting. And it really, it it doesn't look good when you get some of those big storms. It gets pretty tore up pretty quick. So I would, I would advise against the netting. Just it's a pretty large area. If you look at the GI, it is hu- huge area. So the cost to put that up would be.
Okay.
Cost prohibitive.
Awesome. Thank you. And then I did have another citizen reach out just about the sidewalk repair program. And if we had any wiggle room to increase the city's contribution to that program. Just promised I would bring it up specifically in the meeting. And this this person's very concerned about our ADA accessibility, which we are as well. I mean, that's and we are working on it, I know, but.
What is our thing now? It's a 50 50, isn't it?
No.
Eighty twenty.
Eighty twenty.
Yeah, it's pretty.
Eighty on the homeowner, 20 on the city.
No.
No.
No, no. Eighty on the city, 20 on the homeowner.
Paid for the whole thing?
I don't know.
Do they understand that that it's that way, not the other way?
I mean, that should be, I'm assuming a call to Shannon. My understanding is there are hardship cases. Am I correct? On that.
Okay.
There are.
So I would ask them to call them since we don't want to talk about specifics.
Perfect. All right. And Livability Commission, we have several new members. So we got them kind of up to speed on what goals are and I just had a really good, yeah, just kind of a broad overview. We have a new chair, so that that was nice, too. And store preservation is just plugging along.
Great. Anything else?
That's it?
Nothing.
Uh, Fruit Arts and Culture Board, a couple of things. Actually, Mark, I might need your help, too, to explain. One is the pursuit of the Colorado Creative Industries Creative District met with I would say lots of enthusiasm at the meeting. And Mark and I were talking about working it into a workshop, maybe, or at least discussing it further and understanding what we can do as next steps. The Arts and Culture Board is excited. And I think it could be a really good thing. And then secondly, we discussed the Pastel Festival, which is going to be super cool. And Mark actually knows a lot more than I do about that because I was unable to attend the auxiliary meeting, the extra meeting. But it's an event that we'd like to do in September.
Uh, the last fourth Friday.
Oh, no, August, right. Thanks.
Yep. So, yeah, we're kind of modeling it off of the Pastels on if I believe in Loveland. And so they're sharing a lot of information. So we're going to use three sidewalks outside of Civic Center. During that fourth Friday, we'll have live music going on. And then we'll have different artists, different groups. So professional artists, youth, and then amateurs. And so, yeah, looking for this year, just to really get it opened up and get it started and see what kind of art we have from the community. And yeah, pretty exciting. So.
It's gonna be really, really great.
So Ciara created the flyer for us. So we're gonna tweak a few things on that and then start advertising for that, get the Pastels ordered and yeah, looking for some sponsors to help with that cost. So.
So a question on the, we're becoming a designated city. Is that on a workshop already? I mean, we've kind of talked a little bit about this in the past.
Yeah, I think what what would be good is invite them to come and kind of do an overview and then have that discussion on what the steps are. And so we can plug it into a workshop. I know we're my only just trying to think of timing. I know, I know June June's is pretty busy, but so but I think we could fit it in July if that's not too far out. But that's why that's the only challenge with workshops is we're starting. Okay.
Okay. Everybody cool with that? Comfortable with that? Anything else?
No, I have my first Museums of the West board meeting tomorrow, so I'll have support back on that.
All right, good.
The Youth Commission, it doesn't meet over the summer, so I have no I'm floating around aimlessly. I have no board. But so I don't have anything in that regard to report on. I have a question, a follow up question on when you enrolled to pay city bills on online. We talked about maybe when you do that, getting an email bill instead of a physical bill. And I was wondering if there was an update on that.
Yeah, absolutely. So we looked into it and we also discussed our current provider, which we handle all of our online utility bills through. So it's it's definitely possible, especially now with the new financial software that we just implemented this year. It's much easier to where people will be able to opt out of their paper utility bill and just opt into an electronic. It's the quote that we have now, and we're looking into a few things. It's the same system that U water uses, the Express Bill Pay, if you all are familiar with that. So you can log in, you can create your account. There is a setup fee associated with that. So that would require some funds from council, but it's mostly one time. I think it was around $3,000 to $4,000, but then people have access, but it'll also save us in the long run. Because if you get enough people to opt out, our staff's not sending them utility bills each month, you know, not mailing all of that. So there's a, there is a one time fee and there's some ongoing costs. Right now, we're discussing whether or not we need to switch our vendor who receives payments because we use Colorado Portal right now, which is much cheaper on the resident. So we're trying to negotiate whether they'll accept a third party payment processor, but that's where we're at.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, and then I also had a citizen question, my neighbor, actually. Asking if at the parking lot, the gravel parking lot by Hot Tomato, the exit to the alley, is that something that has to, does there have to be two exits? Lots of people, I guess, are coming out like just booking it through the alley, the alley back there. They're leaving the parking lot that way instead of going out on Mulberry. They're leaving the parking lot that way instead of going out on Mulberry.
Yeah.
Just wondering if.
It is a, the alleys are public roadways, so they are open.
But let me. Do we need an egress out of the.
We have to.
Yeah.
Have to.
Let me, let me check, let me check on that, because I, there could be two things, right, if, 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 if we don't need it, we, we could look at closing that off, if we. Have to keep it open, we probably need to like have some times where we're maybe doing a little more patrolling on that, so.
I mean, I.
But I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
Lot for her workouts, and so I mean, there's peop- there's people in the alley a lot, um, too, so just, yeah.
Okay.
That's a good thing, I'm just saying, I, the people driving out there, safety concern, yes, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Like a walkway than a, than a roadway.
It's slower than.
Yeah, it doesn't. Alley's a non-alley alley.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's all I have.
I have yet to meet this week and next week. That will change. Um, so let's see what's on, we had the Grand Junction State of the Valley. Versus the GJEAP one, it was kind of fun to hear Mike, and oh yes, we have this forty-one point two-five acre project, uh, well done, well played. We, just so everybody's aware, philanthropy days are June fifth and through seventh here in Fruta, which is kind of a big deal, which is nice that we're able to host that this year.
Exactly what that, Calhoun keeps hosting some of that, but I know nothing of what it actually is.
So, Jordan.
Yeah, it's a, it's, it's actually, there, there's larger numbers coming, I don't know if you remember the, I mean, I, for a. Yeah, for, for a size in, in Fruta, so about just over three hundred, I think, participants, and it's mainly representatives of. Nonprofit and groups that actually fund nonprofits, if that makes sense, so you got nonprofit agencies and CEOs in the region and out of the region coming in. Together, and then groups that, that actually fund nonprofits in, in different ways. And it's mostly, there, there's, it's going to be, mostly gonna be at the high school, but there's things at Calhoun and at Farm, I know for sure. I'm leading a tour that is similar to a tour we did when. Uh, O Edit had a conference in Grand Junction, so we're gonna start out in the plaza, and then there's some businesses there, they, and we didn't pick it, they, I just got asked to. To lead where they already had picked where they were going, but they're, they're, uh, they're gonna, they're gonna go through like over the edge and. Farm, they're gonna go outside Monti Wake, Wake Zone and. And, and then I'm gonna ride the bus with them and talk about gen- in general what's going on in Fruta, Dan's actually leading a tour. On housing, what's happening with housing in Fruta, because they have a, a, a pretty big interest in, especially like the Chaffa projects and the different types of things like that, so. He's gonna be part of that tour, along with the other cities, and, you know, talking about housing, so there's some, there's some that are gonna break out for a long. Portion of the day and learn about what's happening in Grand Junction and in Fruta with housing. Um, but yeah, there's, there's different sessions and it's, it's really tha- that group, so I keep running into people that, that. We all know who are partners in the valley that are, you know, excited to go, because it's, it's on this side. Of the valley and, you know, being Fruta, but there's people coming throughout from the state, so it's really a non-pro- more of a nonprofit. And the funding, the funders of, uh, looking to do, to put money into various events and nonprofits or some. Probably a better way to describe that, but that's, that's my knowledge of it. So we're not, we're not necessarily going except for doing those two tours as a city.
Thank you. Um. I don't even remember what day it was, it was also kind of blending together, uh, last week, there was a meeting hosted by, or put together by Representative Taggart. Uh, led by DA Dan Rumenstein in terms of mine springs. Uh, with their current situation, uh, from financially where they're at, and then what can different. Governmental agencies do to. Help them, whether that is making sure services that may be going out of the area perhaps get directed towards mine springs in a larger quantity. For instance, you know, Hilltop and Community Hospital have kind of changed some of their practices to, uh, have more people. Uh, as opposed to going to front range, go locally, there was talk in terms of what can be funded, uh, from. What positions different municipalities were in in terms of when they would entertain. Financially helping support mine springs, uh, the general consensus out of that was municipalities were like, we don't want to put. Good money after bad until we know that there's a working model, and then there was, um, a little bit of discussion that there's other discussions going on that we're not allowed to know about. So I don't really know what the outcome of those discussions were, but that was a two-hour workshop that was held at CMU. Just as a note, I am now officially part of the Eureka Board, and then I, I'm actually really excited about that one. It's a fun board, and then I do have a question on term, oddly, they're putting up. What looks like new power poles right next to the current power poles, and there's like electrical equipment on the ground. Do we know what they're doing? I mean, it literally looks like they're putting up a shorter pole next to a taller pole, like sometimes with that much space in between.
Which section of alley over, over near?
Between eighteen and, uh, half, you see a lot of it, but out by towards nineteen, by my understanding, it was pulled by someone in. I related to that solar farm, but does that really have to stretch around? Think on night, come up K Road or up nineteen up to K Road and then head all the way out, but yeah.
All the people that can answer that, I left already, it looks like, but I, we can, we can get something in the update this week on it, so.
Great. Um.
Thing, I, um, I too was elected to a board yesterday, the Community Food Bank.
Oh, congrats.
Yeah, so I'm really excited about that, we're really wanting to, uh, I mean, they already serve fruit along my Mac, but they really want to focus a little bit more on our end of the valley. So that was a really cool invitation that I immediately took them up on, so I'll be probably reporting a little bit more about that too, because they really do want to work with us on.
That's great.
Serving our area, what's that?
Needs are out here.
Oh, absolutely.
Anywhere.
Absolutely.
No, that's awesome, congratulations. All right, before we adjourn, does anybody have anything else? All right, the time is nine thirty-eight. And we are adjourned.